Good evening and welcome to this meet, this evening's study session of the Crestwood School District. I call this meeting to order at 5:34. Ms. Janun, please take role.
Mrs. Berry.
Here.
Mr. Baydoun.
Here.
Ms. Elzayat.
Here.
Ms. Fawaz.
Here.
Ms. Kaminski.
Here.
Mr. Sabah.
Here.
Madam Chair, you have a quorum.
Thank you. If we can add a closed session to this, please? Any, do we have to vote on that or can we just do it?
Uh, no, you don't have to vote, you just gotta state it first.
Okay. Discussion of employee, I just have some questions. Okay, if, uh, we can go, go ahead, Dr. Masal, you're gonna present the Neola presentation?
So our first study session item is a presentation from the Neola team, so I'll turn it over to Dr. Lizar. Dr. Lizar?
So, um, Neola is here with us today virtually. Mark has his presentation ready with regard to their services for assisting in the board policy review process.
If we could get a handout, I'm sorry, any handouts or anything?
I didn't receive an email with handouts, but you had the presentation that you're going to share screen, correct?
Exactly, and I can share this with you when we're done. I can get it to Linda, so we're good to go. So, good evening, everybody. My name is Mark Kleinhands, I'm a retired school superintendent, about 15 years of my career, and I've been in Neola, I'm retired, but doing some subbing on the administrative, in the administrative areas for some districts. I also filled in for a year as an interim superintendent in a district close to you folks at Taylor, right during COVID, so I kinda know a little bit about what you guys have been going through, and I know it's been difficult for boards, so I certainly appreciate your commitment to your kids and to the school district. So, I'm gonna go ahead and share my PowerPoint, and then I can make arrangements if you'd like to, you know, pass this out, make copies and pass it out, so I'm gonna see if this works. Okay, so, can everyone see that okay?
Yes.
Okay, wonderful. So, again, Mark Kleinhands, I'm a Michigan associate, Neola's, I'll get to that, but Neola's in, has a number of school districts in Michigan that we do policy for. I have about 30-plus clients, have many downriver school districts that I'm their Neola associate. I also have some smaller districts out south of Jackson, Michigan. I'm currently located right on the Michigan-Ohio border, so I'm an hour away from you folks and an hour away from the folks in the southern south of Jackson. So, it's quite interesting, 'cause I have very large districts. I am one of the, you know, I have the largest district in the state of Michigan, and then I have some districts that are one of the largest, and then I have some districts that are smaller, 100-plus kids, K-12, in south of Jackson, so I have a wide range of experiences. So, what is Neola? And Neola stands for Northeast Ohio Learning Associates. The main office and production office are located in Ohio. We currently provide services for six states, Michigan, Ohio, and Florida are our largest states. We also service West Virginia and Indiana. In Michigan, we have over 500 school districts that we do policies for, and we work with legal firms out of Washington DC for our Office of Civil Rights policies, as well as our ESSA and EDGAR policies. And in Michigan, we work with Barnum out of Grand Rapids. We have a very close connection with MASB, and you guys, if you've been to the conferences, I'm sure you know Brad, Brad Benasik, we work closely with him. And then, of course, we have in-house attorneys at Neola as well. Okay, basically what we do is we do board bylaws and policy development. We also do administrative guideline development, electronic publishing, and we update our policies twice every year, and I'll get to that towards the latter part of the presentation. But we have other services, we have forms, handbooks, and legal alerts. The legal alerts come out with our updates, and they're excellent for boards of education and central office administrative staff and building administrators, just on hot-button issues and things that are going on. We also do policy and administrative guideline audits. Our bylaws, policies, and administrative guideline templates. So basically what happens is, we have templates, we have over 350 policy templates and about 400 administrative guideline templates. The templates are designed so that school districts, when they're drafting, can go through and look at the templates. They work, I work closely with my clients when they're drafting the policies. There are some areas in the policies that are optional, that school districts can craft to meet their needs, and there certainly are some, like our non-discrimination policies, that are pretty much boilerplate and pretty much follow the letter of the law, and you have to have those as they are in the templates. The way we're structured is the bylaws, which are the 0000 section of our policy handbook, those are the governance of the board, the business of the board, and when you draft those, the board's certainly gonna wanna take a very close look at those bylaws, that's kinda your operating procedures. The policies are developed to govern the district and the operation of the district. Again, those are the work of the board to review. We draft with administrators, board review, and eventual adoption. And then the administrative guidelines are the work of the superintendent and the executive cabinet, and so those don't necessarily go to the board for approval. Once the superintendent's comfortable with the administrative guidelines, again, he uses those to help implement the policy, then he signs off and we get those ready to roll. We use a digital format called Board Docs, and I'll show you what that looks like, and then when we're all said and done, we send a link to your website, so that your internal audiences, the folks in the school district and external, the community, can simply go to your webpage, click on the link, and it will take them directly to the policies. So, the purpose of policy and why Neola, we try to stay current. We don't try, we do, we stay current. Every update that we do, we update policies because either a law has changed, or something at the federal or state level, one of the agencies, like the Office of Civil Rights, have changed the way that they're doing operations, or there could be a court case that changes one of our policies. So we keep those up to date, that's the rationale for the updates. Again, as I had indicated, two a year, those happen after you draft your initial policies and go through. We monitor all the agencies that make decisions about the way that schools need to operate. Certainly, the policies are vested in district authority and guidance to help the board run the district, and it establishes parameters for those folks, the internal audience inside the school district in terms of the operations. All of our information is vetted with legal, both in Washington and here in Michigan, as I had indicated, and we truly assist with, well, assist, for example, the fingerprinting policy that we have. You can see if the Michigan State Police walk in and they ask to do an audit of your fingerprinting policies and procedures, we meet, I know the powers to be at Neola, meet with the folks at the state level, and our, you know, our policy on fingerprinting has been reviewed by Michigan State Police and blessed, and so, also with financial audits, many of the EDGAR updates that we do are, come directly from Washington, especially in the area of title finance, and I know that Penny Morgan takes care of your finance, I worked with her at Taylor, she's awesome, and so I know she's on top of the game, but we make sure that your policies are up to date, so when your auditors walk in the door and they say, "Show us these policies," you're good to go. And then certainly, probably what I would deem is one of the most important, that's the Office of Civil Rights and our non-discrim policies, those are up to date, and as you guys are certainly well aware, the Title IX, all the changes, and even though Title IX didn't deal specifically with non-discrim, those policies have all been updated to meet the letter of the law. We're also very connected, we, as I had indicated, we work closely with Brad Benasik through MASB, we're also connected with MASAA, and all of our associates are retired school personnel, typically their central office, superintendent or central office folks, so there's, I think, now 14 of us across the state of Michigan, we're separated into regions, and so we're pretty connected in that. And certainly the policy, especially when you get to the latter part, and I'll go through those, the 7, 8, and 9,000s, really assists with district operations. This is our structure, again, the bylaws are the board, operation of the board, and then you can see, starting with the 1,000s going down through the 9,000s, those are the policies, and they deal specifically with the title, for example, the 5,000s. If you choose to go with Neola and we get ready to draft the 5,000s, we're certainly gonna want input from your building principals, the finance, Penny certainly would be involved, the HR folks would be involved in the 3s and the 4s, so we set up a drafting plan that meets that need, but there's the structure, and as I, you can see the 7, the 8s and the 9s, really focus on the other operations of the school district that sometimes get lost in the shuffle, so we wanna make sure that we have those areas covered. The title folks and the curriculum folks would really be connected to 2,000, and so it kinda plays itself out, and when we draft, we engage with those folks to make sure that the policies are, reflect the way that the district's running their business. This is a picture of the Board Docs platform, digital platform that we use. We use this both in drafting and in policy updates, and so if you choose to go with Neola, we'll train your, probably one or some districts do two admin assistants to kinda work through this, so they understand how to draft and update policies, and those people would become the superusers, and I'm pretty comfortable with Board Docs, and a lot of times when I'm drafting, I'll just bring my computer in, and we'll pop up the policy, and I'll go through and make edits as we meet with different groups. So, when you sign, if you choose, again, to go with Neola and sign a contract, that's 24 hours of my time to draft, and the way that we set it up is, we open up Board Lock Stink, a Board Docs link for the school district, and they, we then train the superuser, then I come out and meet with folks, and we give them the policies upfront, and they review those policies before I come in and sit down with them, and that ensures that we can get the drafting completed within the 24 hours. The policies, once they're drafted, go to the board, we recommend two readings, you do the two readings, do them by section, and then once they're approved by the board, then we ship them to production, they clean them up and put them on your Board Docs website, the one that, that, you know, everyone will have access to. The drafting of the administrative guidelines is very similar, and then once that process is done, there's the update service, and this is why I talked about the ongoing update service. There's two updates per year, usually about three hours, two hours onsite and one hour of prep and preparing those to go to the board. They include the administrative guidelines and any special updates, and of course, going through COVID, I know that, that we put out numerous special updates that we sent out to all of our clients, so that they could be prepared. And then the legal alerts, as I talked about, is good information for the board. The cost structure, there are different options that you can choose, and I put them in the PowerPoint, so this may be good for you guys to print, but you can see, option one, if you choose to do the whole package, the bylaws, policies, and guidelines, it's 26650 in two installments, so there's another option where you can spread the payments out. I can tell you that a lot of my districts do not do this, a lot of districts do this, they do the bylaws and policies first, and they typically, well, whichever option they choose, and they go through that process, because it is a lengthy process, this will take some time, then after they get done with these, then they move in, oops, excuse me, then they move into the administrative guideline and contract for that service. So, a lot of my school districts do separate, but if you choose to go with Neola and you wanna do it in one fell swoop, you can certainly do that. So, what happens is, the steps moving forward, this kinda spells this out, so what we would do is get you a contract, the board would approve that contract. When that happens, they open a board site, set up training, and then I start, and I recommend, I do this a little bit different than all my other clients, and I do this because of my experience as a superintendent. So, I would recommend that you draft Policy 2266, which is the Title IX policy, and I just put a note here, and I'm sure that you guys have already handled this, but we make sure that the folks are trained, that they go through their training, I'm sure this has already happened, and so there are, I know that in the back, welcome back to school, little vignettes that, that all teachers and administrators, everyone goes through, they do have the Title IX training sessions, we'd also recommend the board go through that. And then I draft 2266, and then the non-discrim, the 504, ADA, disability discrimination, and the anti-harassment, both in the curriculum and with the students, I draft that with the superintendent and the cabinet, and we try to get those to the board right away. And the reason why we do that is, if something's, you know, is gonna go south in your district, it's typically in these areas, our goal at Neola is to help, you know, work with districts to make sure they're covered if they have issues, and by having these updated policies, if you have an issue and it's in this area, you'll be good to go. So I did, as a superintendent, have a case that Office of Civil Rights were involved in, and one of the great things was, we had just drafted Neola policy, so, and implemented it and put it all out, and I think that truly helped in our particular situation. Then we move on and draft the first half of the bylaws, we get those to the, to the board, because the board's really gonna wanna take some time, that probably would be a work session where you would review those, and then we go through the rest of the 1,000s with superintendent cabinet, then we get the curriculum folks involved for the 2,000, HR for 3 and 4, the principals for 5, the finance folks, Penny and her crew for the 6, and then we bring everybody back to do the 7, 8, and 9, and that just depends on, you know, there's sections in there that deal with food service, with maintenance, and we would pull them in when we would need them. Once you're done with the whole process, there is an annual updating service fee, that's down the road, a couple of years after everything is all said, it includes the annual update as well as an annual digital maintenance fee, and that is all the work that we do to keep your link in your Board Doc site up and current. Again, after we do draft all the policies, there is an updating process that we go through, this is a picture of it, we take the changes, again, recommended by legal firms, we go through your policies, we, and I work with the admin, the superuser on this, and we embed into your policies, and then they come to you as updates. We do information on why we're updating policies, typically we'll cite the law, or the court case, or if it's from the Office of Civil Rights, we put that in our overview, so that the boards know why they are, we're asking them to update their policy to keep current, but again, that's down the road after we get, after we're complete with all the drafting process. So there's our contact information, my information. Pat Colbert is the chief executive officer of Neola, you can certainly email him, and then I can take some questions, but please know, thank you for your service. Being a board member these days, especially going through COVID, can be stressful and difficult, but, you know, your students certainly need you, and I appreciate your commitment. So I will take some questions.
Okay, my first question is, how many attorneys do you have involved in your company?
So, we, I don't have the actual number. I know at Barnum, because we meet with the folks at Barnum, we have a, we have our direct contact, but they do bring in, like, if there's an issue with the state police auditing, they bring in a specialist in that area. The folks out in Washington, I've never met, so I'm not sure how many attorneys they have out there, and I know in-house, we have, I know for sure we have one, 'cause we meet with that person all of the time, but I can get that answer for you through Mr. Colbert.
So I guess my question is, would they be assisting us? Would the attorneys be assisting us, or would it just be, I mean, I know I heard you say it would be you and your staff that have had the experience, but what law support would we get?
So, when I say, so yes, you would just meet with me for the drafting and the updates. If there are issues, there are questions that you have, they go through me, and then I send them to corporate, and then they get the answers, if it's a legal answer, but when I say we work with them, for example, let's go to the Title, the Title IX policy or the non-discrims, all of those policies, all of the update language has been vetted by these legal firms. So what you're getting from me is work that has been vetted by our attorneys, whether it would be in Washington, or even when we meet every year, the Neola associates from across the state, we meet twice a year before update comes out, and we actually meet with our attorney from, from Barnum, as well as Brad Benasik, and they go over the updates, David vetted, they are the ones that look at the, you know, if a law has changed or a court case, and they actually make the recommendations for the language updates, the language changes.
So, I'm sorry, if anybody else has any questions, let me know, but my other question is, would the attorneys review our final draft, or would it just be you and your team?
So, if there were questions, the language has already been vetted by attorneys, now if there's district-specific language, that, in some districts do this, what we recommend is that you have your own attorney look at that language, 'cause if a policy's changed immensely, like there's major changes in a policy, then the warranty, and our warranty for any policy is, if it's a Neola policy and it's a question about policy, your district attorney, if you get taken to court on that, your district attorney would be the lead, but our folks would support through Neola. But if it's district-specific, so it's not our language, then, then, then the warranty is not there, then that would be your own legal firm that would, you know, that would deal with that particular issue. So, typically, when we draft policies, all of the recommendations, and when you go through, like, for example, the Title IX policy, there are options in the Title IX policy, but it's, the options that you choose are all, and we have options right in there, if you choose to go with us, you'll see, that all of that has been vetted by attorneys already, and regardless of what option you choose, you're gonna be fine.
Okay, Ms. Kaminski, go ahead.
So, Mark, my name's Sue Kaminski. So basically, you're selling us some templates for all of the policy that you have, and we can tweak them a little bit, but if we tweak out of the realm of what you give us, we have to have our own attorney look at it? So for $26,000, I can't get any personal attention?
Well, I mean, so, when I make that statement, that's the warranty, but the Neola policies are vetted prior to me even coming out, I mean, they're already vetted and recommended, you know, by Neola, which means we stand behind them. So if there is a question about, you know, whether something's legal, or if you guys, you know, hey, we wanna bounce that off an attorney, I can certainly send it to Neola, and I'm sure we can get it looked at, but most of our policies have already been vetted, so what you're getting...
I understand that, and I appreciate it, and I like that answer better than the answer that you gave to Nadia, because we are a little bit unique, we're one of two districts that have a very high, you know, Middle Eastern population, we have some unique situations in which families go back to their countries for a few weeks, I mean, and not that everything's separate or different, but we do try and, and make our policy and procedures fit our students' needs, and it's important to us. So I just wanna make sure you're gonna work with us, rather than take a template, and I'm very familiar with templates, because I wrote templates for programs, I just need to know that if we have special wording or special things we need, that we're gonna get that attention as well.
Yep, and I certainly will ask about the number of attorneys that we work with, 'cause that'd be a good question for me, so that's a great question. And then I'll ask about what kinda legal support, and I know that Mr. Colbert's really good to work with, so we'll get that answer.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Fawaz. So, within the cost of the 266, you said for the service section, there were two updates per year, and then you also stated that there was ongoing services, so in reference to that, if there are further updates requested, needed, discussion, question, any, anything, is that included in that, or is any times, like, you're contacted, or anyone contacted, like, if it's Patrick, one of your attorneys, anybody, is there an additional fee for that, or is that all included? So if, you know, they, if the team needed to get ahold of you guys or had questions throughout the year, is that available, or is that an extra charge? And then, go ahead.
No, that's a great question. So I do, there are times where I get questions from my school districts, and if I can't answer them, I send them to Neola. I have not sent in a charge for that, however, if a district, for example, you get 24 hours of drafting time to just do the initial work, let's say that it goes to 48, or let's say that it goes way over, then that does kick in what's called Neola Select, and Neola Select is for the districts that, or I have some districts that just Neola Select, because they wanna, they want extra services, or they want, you know, me to sit down with folks outside of the policy, then that's $100 an hour for Neola Select services, and that includes any policy changes, 'cause that's certainly what we'd be meeting on, the drafting of that, and putting those into your, you know, into your service. But before we get to that, that I get approval from the superintendent, and I have a few districts that do have me do that, they want me to do that, but typically, questions that come up, for example, the whole, I'm sure you guys, with the masks and everything, we had a ton of questions that went through, and mostly through email, and we would respond, and that wouldn't be an extra charge. If it becomes excessive, then my boss wants to make sure that, you know, that, that we talk to the superintendent about Neola Select services.
Okay, and then, my next question was in regards to training. You said you would train two users and, you know, call them your superusers. Does that mean only the two trainers, and the expectation is they'll train others, or are you thinking just them two would need it?
Yeah, so, great question. So, the way the Board Docs is structured, the superuser is kinda the gatekeeper and can set up Board Docs sites for all the board members, can set up Board Docs, Board Docs access for administrators, but the editing, we like to keep to just a few folks, because what happens is, someone could make some edits in a policy and not even know it, and the superuser doesn't know it, and so that could cause... And so that could cause some confusion when the final policy is drafted. So typically, if, if some, if, like if you're pretty comfortable with different types of apps, the, the Board Docs process and all of that is really not that difficult. But we really like to keep the editing kind of close, because if it's opened up, things can get, can go south in a hurry with a policy, and we don't want to do that.
So they would have the edit access, and everyone else would only have read access?
Yep, yep, it's called read-only. And so, but we definitely want to give the board read-only access. And the reason why we do that is, Neola, back when I was a superintendent, I was superintendent in a small district in Montrose that had Neola, and then down here, a larger district, Bedford Schools, 5,000 kids. What, what can happen real easy is there can be some major problems. And so, we know that board members are busy, and so we went, it used to be paper, now it's digital, so that if a board member is, you know, sitting in a doctor's office or waiting for an appointment, you should be able to access your Board Doc site, look at policy, review policy, if there's an upcoming meeting, you should have access to that, so that you can understand what you're voting on, and have questions ready to go for your superintendent, your administrative team about the drafting. So that's why, kind of why Neola went from paper back in my day, when I was superintendent, to the digital format.
Thank you.
All right, Mr. Baydun.
Hi, my name's Hasbe Baydun, couple of questions for you, or maybe a few. If the process is updated by a super-user, does that then get looked at by Neola? I know you said our board attorney should vet it out, but still, does it at least get looked at by Neola?
So if there were, if there's district-specific language, and let's just say it was a, a couple of questions, it wasn't a major change, I probably would send that through and have our folks look at it. But the updated recommendations are, are, they come from our attorneys. And they put those changes, recommend those changes in the policy. When they come through to you folks, the changes would, would be in green, and green for new language, red for strikeout. And then ultimately, you folks vote on those to adopt those updates.
The reason why I ask is, if, if we do work on an update through the attorney for some language, there could be some other conflicts down the line that interject with other areas of the document. That's why I ask if Neola will review it.
Yeah, and I'll get a specific question on that. And you're, you're not talking about a major edit, you're talking about just if an areas edited will impact another policy, correct?
Correct.
Yeah.
Okay, and then...
I'll edit this down, so give me a second.
No problem. That's exactly what I wrote, notification.
That was your next one?
Okay.
Okay, go ahead, I'm sorry.
Okay, couple more here. Is there an automatic notification to the board if the super-user goes in and updates the policy?
Um, no, no. So when the updates come out, the way it works is, I call, set an appointment, or the super-user will get an email, sometimes they'll email me, we do it that way. I come out and I visit with the administrative team, and I explain the updates, okay? Then those updates then are put into a board packet, and they, along with the explanation of why the policy was updated, and they go to the Board of Education for two readings. And we recommend that you do a reading, have it on a board agenda, do a first reading, and then at your next board meeting, do a second reading adoption. And so you see all the edits before you adopt.
So, the reason why I ask is, if there is a super-user, are they able to go in and edit the policy without the board knowing? That's my question.
Those changes would have to go, so, so I would say no, and here's why. When, when you guys adopt a poli, when you, when a change is made to a policy, for it to get in your, on your Board Docs site with your official policies, they have to go through me with a disposition sheet that has the date that the board adopted those policies, okay? And then I send them into production. So you would see all of those changes in green and red. They can't, the way Board Docs is set up is, you can't just go in and do language changes, and it changed the policy. So production will not allow that. Matter of fact, we do all of our work in the draft section of Board Docs. The active section is where your formal policies that you've adopted are located.
So you're the fail-safe?
Correct, yes, and production. Because, let's say they went on, it would be, your policies would be all, they'd be green and red, there'd be language changes, and that would be a, I'm sure production would call me and say, "Mark, someone's going into that policy, and they're either A, working in the wrong area, and/or B, they've made some changes, has the board approved those."
Okay, thank you. And then the last question, since it is a template, is the language patented throughout the other districts? Is there anything that another district can use that, or they want to use that they can't use due to Neola? I think, I think I know the answer here, but I'm better off...
We don't want to steal on our policies, but it does, I'm sure it happens out there. But I do know of school districts that look at Neola policies and then kind of make a decision. But the, the policies across many of our clients are similar, obviously. And because they're typically designed to, you know, they are designed to follow the law. So does that mean that someone's not out there taking some of our language? I'm not sure about that, so.
Thank you very much.
Anybody else? Going back to Hasbe's question, I thought you said that the super-user would have access, and they could go in there and edit.
Yeah, they can edit, yep, exactly. But the edits are in green and red, and they, so they edit in the draft section, goes to the board, the board approves, then I get an email, I review that language, and then I ship it to production. Production cleans it up and puts it in your active folder, which is your, it's like the old, I go back in the day, your old policy book, right? So, yes, the super-user needs to edit. And there, those edits are in, in green and red. And typically, when I'm saying edits, I'm saying, when you go through the drafting process, you, you check the sections that you want, you cross out the ones that you don't want. That's what I'm saying when I say edit. If there's specific language the district wants in a policy, that your attorney wants you to add into your policy, then, you know, we would copy and paste and embed that, and Neola would process, process that and put it in your policy. So what I'm saying edits really, it's, it's more or less checking boxes and deleting language that, of boxes that you didn't check, and just putting strikeouts through.
So let me get, be clear, let me make sure I'm understanding this. So what you're saying is, no matter who touches that policy, there would be a signal, a scent of some type, that this was done, and then it gets kicked back to us?
Yep, and let me, let, okay, can you see my, can you see the screen?
Okay.
Yep, do you see to the right, the green and the red?
Okay.
Yeah, that, those are, that's recommended language that our attorneys are recommending this policy. This is employment of substitute policy, that, that we're recommending, recommending the board adopt. So these are edits that are made. Now what I would do, and this is what you're, I work with your admin on, this is a template over on the right, once we get to the update process, we would copy and paste those into your policy. That's what I'm, when I'm talking about editing, I'm talking about preparing the policies to go to the board.
Okay, any other question I had? How mu, is how much hands-on would you be available, or is this all done virtual?
Typically, what I do is, the very, the first meeting, I would meet with the superintendent and the team to do the Title IX and the, and the nondiscrimination policies. Then from that point forward, it's basically, some I do virtual, it, it's, it kind of, it's however it works and what's going on. Some districts, they don't, they want me to do remote. Some districts, I was at a school district just last week, and did face-to-face drafting. So it just depends on how the district would like to move forward.
Thank you, Mr. Baydun.
You did say earlier that the system will automatically send you an email notification if there is a draft update by the super-user. Is there any way we can add the board members to that notification? And the reason why I ask is, if there is an update to the policy, the only fail-safe is yourself. And if it does go to production, and nothing's caught that shouldn't be in there, then, you know, considering maybe you're on vacation, and then someone steps into your place, I don't know how it works. But my question is, the system is set up to send you a notification, as you said so earlier. Why can't we add multiple users for that notification, for it to be sent?
Okay, so when I, when I said that, production would just email, would email me. It isn't a function of a change. They won't touch a policy unless it has a disposition sheet and a date that the board approved that policy.
Thank you.
So, yeah, so I don't, I've not heard of what you're asking for, but I can certainly inquire.
Thank you.
He's talking about a multi-approval function, where the board would be notified also. But I think what you're saying is, the declaration from the board would suffice the action.
Correct, yep. Correct.
Just one more question, as far as any issues with the dashboard or any tech issues, is that responsibility on us, once it's up and running? Or do you support that throughout the year?
We support that. So we give you the link, and you, we need to have you or your tech folks embed it in your webpage, but then we take it from there.
Okay.
So any changes, any, any processing, any publication, any of that stuff, we take care of that through production at Neola. We update those policies, we make sure you're current, we make sure the link is working. Every now and then, there'll be an issue where somehow the link will get broken, and the districts will call me, and I'll go in, and first of all, I'll call Neola, and talk to our tech folks, and they'll look at it, and then, you know, might have to re-embed the link to make sure it's good. But the digital processing part of it, we take care of, it's part, part of the fee.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions from the board members? Mr. No?
So just real quick, so from start to finish, this typically takes how long?
Well, a lot of it depends on the structure that, that the district leadership team wants to implement. I can tell you that when, when I was down here at Bedford, we did both the, the, we drafted the policies and the administrative guidelines, took a little over a year. So it is quite a process. And part of that is, like, if you guys choose to go with us, when you get the nondiscrimination policies, they're huge, the title, title alone is 30-plus pages. So there's going to be a, a work from you folks looking through these policies. And so, but it, it is a process to go through and draft. For example, the 5,000s, the principals need time to look at those policies, to review them, so that when I come in and sit down with them, or we do virtual, we're drafting those policies, they already have an understanding of what we're going to be going through. But with that, I will say, as a board, as a superintendent, and I know even administrators, going through this policy is like a major professional development process. And even for the board, when you guys do the bylaws, it will really cause you to think about how you guys run your district, and some of the responsibilities that you have. So I kind of call it a big PD thing, but it is a little bit of a lengthy process, and part of that is going to involve you folks with reviewing the policies. And if you have questions, going back and forth, working through those issues. And so it, it isn't, you just snap your fingers and they're ready to roll. It does take some time to go through the process. And I, I certainly would meet with superintendent and talk about a timeline, a tentative timeline. The summer's a great time to engage folks, because they're not certainly as busy as they are now, and the school district's going strong. And so it just depends on the structure that superintendent would like to implement in the timelines.
I have a question. Yes, Ms. Kaminski.
If there's more than two updates needed per year, so right now, the governor of Michigan's proposed some incentives for teachers, and he hasn't passed yet as far as financial things. If something comes out specific to one of your states that you work with, and we need an update more than twice a year, is there an extra charge for that, then?
Uh, no, the special updates come out, and we ship them right, we email them right to the, either the superintendent or the superintendent's admin assistant. And typically, those are, you know, they're one-pagers, they're pretty much what folks are looking for, for guidance on an issue, and board members or superintendents put them on a board agenda and get them to the board the very next meeting, so.
Okay, thank you.
Those typically, yep, and that does happen with the, I mean, with the whole issue that we were all dealing with just a couple of weeks ago, you know, with the whole vaccination stuff. We shipped those directly out, and superintendents ran with it. I didn't even come out for an update or anything, they looked at it, this is what they needed, and they ran with it, and of course, we did all that work, and that went nowhere. But that's what school districts do, right, and superintendents do, so.
Okay, anybody else? Thank you so much for your time, we appreciate you joining us, and we'll be discussing this, and we'll be making decisions soon. Thank you.
Okay, very good, thank you.
All right, have a good evening.
Bye.
Thank you. We all sat down. So just to meet the board, so what we can do next is, I know you had the presentation on Trune, this is the presentation on Neola. We can send back to the board some comparison, just so you can review that based on the presentations. I can say that cost-wise, it's very close. The two major differences is... Trune is more, but it's, it's comparable.
I don't think Trune was more.
It wasn't more.
No, Trune was like 13,5.
I think Neola was a little more, but they were, they were...
So Trune was $7,000 for the service, and the cost for administrative guidelines was $4,000. So it was $11,000, and then there was an annual fee of up to 25, up to $2,500, depending, excuse me, depending on what was being used, it could be less or none. If additional services is not used, and then all meetings were done via Zoom.
And I don't think...
They charge for every service, right?
Yeah, there's, there's an hour for everything they do.
There is.
If you meet with them after, again, it's if you meet with them, and it just all depends on what additional services you need.
Mr. Baydun?
I believe what I took, the takeaway I took from Thorn was, it was all à la Carrman.
Yeah.
The takeaway I took from them is they're willing to work with us, whatever we need, multiple updates, whatever it is, those were the two biggest takeaways I took away, and web-based versus paper.
Right, with, with that being said, are these the only two entities that we can use?
These are the two largest, that the districts around us either use, Trune or Neola. Another major takeaway is, and as he had mentioned, Neola has attorneys on staff that they go to, like a, like a second party. Trune is a law firm, it is one of our law firms. But Neola, my experience with Neola has been very good, in my previous... But Neola, my experience with Neola has been very good in my previous position and then looking at different things. The other big thing about Neola that I like a lot is the fact that it's web-based. You go onto their website, you can pull any policy, you type in a word, boom, it pops up. And what he was mentioning about change is whoever the super-user is, if information comes through and there needs to be an edit, his statement, which makes sense that nothing gets changed officially on the website unless they sign off on it. And they don't sign off on it unless they have board documentation showing that there was a one reading, a second reading, and a vote. So nothing can change. So if the super-user goes in there and changes it, he says it'll be red. It doesn't turn green until they sign off. The other thing about Neola that I like over Trune is they really are focused on schools. Like, that's really, that's all they do is the schools. So when changes come from the state, so on and so forth, it, you know, they're, they're on top of it. Trune does other things. And the benefit for Trune is that it is their attorneys that are on staff. Where Neola, it's not their attorneys for saying. So, I mean, but we can provide all the documentation and do a side-by-side comparison for the board to look at before making a decision. The other thing too is that we're revamping all of our policies. So we're not looking at one policy here. We're looking, starting at, you know, four zeros to nine thousand. So that's gonna take time. And what I like about what Neola's, where Neola's presentation was something I didn't realize until the presentation was that Trune is more like, here it is, tell us what you guys want, we'll help you. Where Neola's like, okay, we'll get with your principals, we'll get with this team, we'll get with that team. So they get with the team of people that are gonna be living these policies. And here's the good thing, it's not us writing the policies. The policies are, it's the, it's the, it's the law. And then we identify which policies fit into our needs. So I, I think it was Sue that mentioned, you know, with families that go overseas and all. There could be a policy that we put into place that another district wouldn't use and vice versa. And there's tons of policies, there'd be several policies you may not choose. Be like, okay, we don't need this, we don't need this, we need this type of thing. And with our, you know, with the direction we've gone with, with our contracts, with how we use COVID funding, with the changes in the student code of conduct, so on and so forth, this is where now, okay, now we can look at what we've done and adopt policies that fit our needs. And again, every year, you can review it and say, look, let's add this policy, let's take away this policy, let's edit this policy. So, so that's, that's where we stand.
So, so he said that he takes twenty-four hours of his time to draft and then we have twenty-four hours of associate time. So there's, where they assist in draft, you know, with the district going, so. Twenty-four hours of associate time working with the district to draft administrative guidelines. But basically, what I took from what he said was that our principals, our admins will sit down and go through the policy. I didn't feel like he was saying that the entire time he was going to be-
Not the entire time, no.
Right, because he's only giving twenty-four hours of his time to draft, not, not with us and then twenty-four hours with the district. So I just don't see how, with twenty-four hours, I mean, how he plans on sitting with each group to go over all of the policies as a whole.
It's twenty-four hours of policy, twenty-four hours admin.
That's almost two weeks.
So, and then any, any or-
Saying over a course, he, he, okay.
So if they're not gonna, so the thing is, they don't sit, any, any of these groups, they don't sit with you through the entire process.
Right.
They sit with you in the beginning, they go through it, they give you a template, they talk you through it, how should you do it? What are the things you should look for? Then they let you go off and do it. Then you call them back and you go over what you've done, so it's a process.
I just feel like, how is this only going to be, I know you're saying two weeks, but he's saying from start to finish, it's going to be a year. How are we not going to go over that time that, that he, well, he said, I mean, and, and if you do go over that time, you're gonna spend, obviously with approval of the board, you're going to spend a hundred dollars an hour. I just don't see, if it's gonna take from start to finish a year, how forty-eight hours is sufficient.
So look at it this way, and I don't care if it's Neola, Trune, I don't care who it is, I'm just saying in general. Whenever you're looking to revamp something, it does take a full year, let's say. But through that process, you have multiple meetings of people that get together that have a task. Their role is to help you get started on that task and give you where you wanna be. You go, you work on that task, you come back, they come back in, okay, what did you complete? How did you complete it? What questions do you have? All right, here's your next tax, task. So through the process, it's not twenty-four hours straight where they're sitting with, but it's doing, so. And, and no matter whom we go through, Neola, Trune, even if we find another one, we're revamping the entire policy. So having the fact that, you know, you're gonna have different groups of people that it impacts part of that process is gonna be very, very helpful too.
My, my concern is the legalities. Like, they, I feel like they don't have the legal support that we're looking for. And see, that, that would be my concern. I felt like the legal support from Neola wasn't as strong as I would have liked to see.
I wasn't, sorry, I wasn't completely finished, no, it's okay. So I know with Trune, they said that they put together Ted lawyers and teachers and they put together policies that would allow the school districts to be, you know, state-of-the-art in terms of governance. I, again, I'm not either or, I'm just looking at the cost difference, you know. And granted, I get that Trune is à la carte, but I feel like with Neola, we are going to go over that cost anyway, that, that number.
I don't think we should worry about cost, we need to worry about what's best for us, but we wanna make sure that we have-
But I'm talking about-
The legal support.
Yes, with both. And if you have, and we do have a relationship with Trune, I, I know I say their name different every time I say it, so I-
We all do.
I'm like-
Trune.
Trune.
Like a train.
And they do have attorneys, so I, I'm not, I, I, I really wish he would have sent his, I, I tried to literally write down everything he was saying as he went through it, because I know that when we come back to discuss it, you know, we could at least look back on what he was-
He's gonna send us the presentation.
Right, but if we're sitting here after the presentation discussing it, you know, it would have been nice to actually have it in front of us. I, I'm all set right now.
Okay, Mr. Sabal.
Honestly, I'm, I'm a little disappointed he wasn't here. I'm a little disappointed the presentation wasn't given to me, because I looked around the room and everybody was doing something.
I was typing it out.
And, no, I, I get it, because things come up on your mind, you wanna write, you wanna look at something. It's a big disappointment for me that you couldn't spend the hour, no offense to him, I don't know what the situation was, but I would have really liked him to be here. I would have liked the presentation to be in front of me so that I could follow along and put notes instead of having to do it somewhere else, first and foremost. I'm not as concerned as on the legal part as Ms. Berry is for the simple fact that obviously, these are documents that, this is a, this is a standing-type situation for all school districts. The legalities in themselves, you know, obviously attorneys are drawing these documents up. But honestly, my biggest, my biggest downfall to all this is that he wasn't here and I didn't have anything to look at. And that's just, that's, that's a tough one for me to get over.
I understand.
Mr. Badu?
So if you think of side-by-side when Trune was here, we asked him if he would train us. He said, one day, I'll be in and out, anything else, I'm, you're paying me for. That was very clear. And I know, Madam Cherry, you were very, you were very upset over that statement.
Yeah, because it was all virtual.
And Sue, right? And the one thing I took away from Neola is, someone asked the question, how many attorneys do you guys have over there on staff? And he said, I don't know, but there's quite a few, right? That was the takeaway.
Third party.
Third party, right, that they work with, right? We do have our own district attorney here that we use.
Trune.
It's Trune, right? But with Trune, I felt like we have to put together what we want and work with them to create bylaws as opposed to take what's been effective in the district around us and then edit those to tailor our district. So Trune, you start from scratch with what you have today. With Neola, I, I see you shaking your head.
I see, I see it totally opposite.
They're all templates, huh?
Yeah, they're even, even, yeah, even Trune has their own templates and it's the same.
It's all template-based.
Right, but he, but he said that everything that we work on would be a change that we would have to pay for. Trune said that. I have it in my notes. Trune said, whatever we change afterwards-
Based off the templates.
Based off the templates, we'd have to pay for it.
If I may add, and I, and I, just to add to what Haas said, and I, trust me, it's neither here or there for me right now. But the thing with Neola that did catch my attention and something that Haas says, yes, it is a template, but we would be working off of what local districts around us are using so that we can draw from that as well as add to it as a possibility. But again, it is a template and there's a lot of different elements to that template. But I, that's where I understood too with Neola.
Go ahead, Sue.
So both companies, and I think any additional company we would look at is template-based. I, like you, was upset that they weren't here. I was looking up the Neola website and going through their frequently asked questions and things. And I think as a salesperson trying to promote the company, he really felt short. That doesn't mean I think the company necessarily fell short. I would like to find out neighboring districts, and I know Taylor used them, but who they used. You know, maybe Livonia, maybe Wayne Losland, just, you know, did they create their own? I just think that would be a good thing to find out.
We'd definitely do that.
Does this say about the GFC?
No, I was just, she stole my thunder about-
Oh, sorry.
No, you're fine.
You know, I mean, legal firms use templates for operating agreements and trusts. And I mean, this isn't like a bad thing to have a template.
Oh, I wasn't saying it was a bad thing.
No, yeah, I'm just saying, a template is a template and you adjust it based on the needs of your client, in this case, where the client is. So none of that really matters to me. Honestly, cost, I'm with Ms. Berry, we have to look at the cost, but that's not the driving factor here. The driving factor is the support, having the right documentation, the, you know, the proper, you know, the proper leads to, to get us to where we're looking to go. But at the end of the day, that's just the way I feel what I said earlier.
Go ahead, Ms. Jenno.
So can I just add that, even, even if, and yes, one hundred percent, I understand that the cost is not gonna be the driving factor, but we obviously have, we obviously put trust in Trune to begin with since they are our, are the district's attorneys. But if you set at forty-eight hundred or forty-eight hours, let's just take the whole amount that he's, that they're offering us without charging an additional fee, that's forty-eight hundred dollars. If, if we went over what Trune is offering with the eleven thousand dollars plus the forty, if we happen to need additional forty-eight hundred or forty-eight hours you're talking about, it still would be significantly cheaper than the cost of Neola.
That's true.
And you're working with attorneys that we work with, or not necessarily the attorney we work with for our legal services, but-
I think the side-by-side thing will be helpful.
We can do that.
And I can quickly answer your question with regards to districts they serve in the area. So as Trune stated, they service about seventy districts. Neola does four hundred fifty-two in the state of Michigan. And surrounding districts, they do Allen Park, Allendale, they're in alphabetical order. Hang on as I, I'm looking for ones close by. Birmingham. This is Neola.
I'm assuming Dearborn.
They do Dearborn, I believe they do Livonia. They don't, no. District seven.
These are the only two you could find up.
This is the two largest ones that, that support schools.
Ferndale.
I'll be honest, that wasn't a-
Like you said, there's a four hundred and some, I'm just kind of trying to-
Go ahead, Mr. Badu.
We can get that list, too.
Yeah.
Thank you.
So I, I, I know we, we, we keep reverting back to our attorney and the district attorney. Honestly, while we're doing all these bylaws, I think we should reevaluate that too.
Evaluate what?
The attorney firm that we use.
Are you talking about?
So we have two firms. We have Trune and we have, what's the other firm?
Keller-Tom.
Keller-Tom.
Trune. We should reevaluate that as well, as well as how we reevaluate.
We just set the-
Yeah, we just set the-
I wasn't a part of it, so.
When did we renew their contract? Wasn't it recent?
Yeah.
Yeah, we just renewed their contract.
It's on a yearly.
Oh, it's yearly. I think we should reevaluate that for the next coming year as well, since you're doing your bylaws and everything. I think that would help a lot.
It would be January of twenty twenty-three. So, I just have a comment, so. So when you're looking at policies and procedures, okay, and both entities are giving you a template to work with, so that's pretty standard, pretty straightforward. You have a template, your administration puts in the words, you know, that, that, they go with your district and what's going on with your district. So I think, I think what we need to evaluate is ourselves. What is it that we want out of Trune or Neola, or if you end up finding another one? And then I'd like to know, I, I think maybe we should survey ourselves, really, because I feel like nobody's really happy with either one. And I just feel like there might be a missing piece in what they're offering and what we think we should be getting. So maybe we should, number one, survey ourselves. Number two, you're gonna put something together side-by-side comparing each one with pros and cons. In the meantime, if you find somebody else, that's fine. But I'd also like to know, what, what do you survey, if you guys could survey yourselves? Like, what does the administration need out of these two companies, not just the board? Because ultimately, the administration and your team are the ones who are going to be implementing procedure policy. Absolutely, but I'm saying, who the policies and procedures support on the frontline is administration, staff, students, faculty. So I think that there's a disconnect in what we think we need and what we think we're, we're not getting from these two companies. And then maybe we can find something in the middle to agree on. Because I feel like everybody's statements are something that neither company is providing, right? So, and I don't know what it is, I don't, I don't know what everybody thinks that they, they want out of this. I just think it's pretty straightforward. You need policies, you need procedures, both offer a template, you know, I would take cost into it.
We're not recreating on that yet.
Yeah, it's just-
Okay, Sue, did you have something?
Um, just quickly, our policies that we have, I am shocked that they have not bit us in the butt yet or the lack thereof, our policies. My main concern with both companies frankly is the length of time. I don't think we have the time these kind of companies are talking about. I think the committee that does policy and procedure is gonna have to work their butts off maybe a few times a week to get ready to even undergo this kind of change, because they're must. I mean, Danielle, they're, they're horrid, I can't even, and it scares me how long both companies wanna take. That's my main concern with both companies.
How long did those, so what they would be?
They went that long.
No, Trune was not that long, Sue. But I, I go, I, you, I agree with Danielle, I think we need to figure out what we want out of it. My issue would be to make sure that everything is legally done and reviewed. I, I just didn't feel like we were gonna get that support from Neola. He wasn't even sure how many attorneys he had on staff. So if we wanna further discuss it, if you wanna look at other options.
I think we need to look at the side-by-side before we can make any kind of even further discussion. I think, I know I need that visual.
We can also look at other companies if we feel that we're not getting the support, but, you know, the board has to agree.
You know, you can find out who the rights call used, I can find out who the volume used, I can find out Trenton.
Mr. Badu?
How about we put on Dr. Masalem when he meets with his peers to get a feel of how Neola is and how to work with them when they implement it? And then also the ones with Trune? And then bring that back as a part of your side-by-side comparison so we can at least understand it.
Will do. I can send, I can send them out and we'll survey.
You guys have superintendent meetings, right?
Yep, yep, yep.
So bring that in as a topic into your meeting and then understand the pros and cons and bring those in. I think that'll help.
The only thing I would say is that each district is different and who they service is, is, is different. So you can't, everybody's opinion is, it's their, that's their perception and their perspective. Right, I'm just saying that-
Follow what you said?
A review, again, it just, I'm not saying that it's not still something to look into. A review, again, it just, I'm not saying that it's not still something to look into, I'm just saying that each district is an, is their own individual district. And their needs are different.
Recommendations are good. Recommendations are good. Let's understand what's better and then the board will decide.
We'll bring that all back to the board.
Thank you.
Not a problem. Thank you.
Okay, thank you for that. If we can go into closed session, I just had a couple of questions about some things that I've employed.
I can make a motion to go to closed session.
Support.
We have a motion from Ms. Kaminsky. I'm sorry? From Ms. Kaminsky, supported by Mr. Sabo, to go into closed session for the discussion of an employee. An employee comment that was written in the, I'm sorry? Personnel, personnel issue. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Okay, welcome back. We're coming out of our study session. We need a motion. Go ahead, Ms...
I'd like to make a motion to come out of closed session, go to open session.
Support.
We have a motion for Ms. Kaminsky, supported by Mr. Sabo, that would come out of closed session. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Madam Chair?
Ms. Kaminsky.
I'd like to make a motion to end our study session.
Support.
We have a motion for Ms. Kaminsky to end the study session, supported by Mr. Sabo. Any, all in favor signify by saying aye.